Are you from here?
Councilor.
And welcome to the Waterloo City Council Work Session. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowson?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mrs. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Foyce? Mr. Greider?
Here.
And Mrs. Jewen?
Here. Motion for the agenda and minutes, please.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Greider.
Motion to approve the agenda as proposed, as well as approval of the minutes of the December 6, 2021 Work Session as proposed.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First item on our agenda is operations update from the city clerk's office, and we have our city clerk, Ms. Felkley. Turn it over to you.
All righty. Well, welcome, everybody. Just do a quick update on things that have been going on in the clerk's office in the last year. Put together a few numbers of just some things that we've done in the last year. These are things that happen on an annual basis, but it's kind of fun to just put a number behind all the, all the things that we do, and some that stick out to me, especially is the digitized records. So, we utilize Laserfish to have a digital archive of all of our records, our minutes, ordinances, resolutions, agreements, et cetera. So, so far, we've got 380,858 pages of documents that are just, you know, searchable, a click of a button.
That's nice.
Of those, there's 321,858 pages that are available to the public through the portal on the city website, so the vast majority of that, the public does have access to. We've been working on income offset. We implemented that a few years back, doing collections for delinquent ambulance bills. So far this year, we've collected $48,123 through utilizing that program. Legislation, that's a combination of resolutions and ordinances. We've done 852, and the larger number is the agenda items, so everything that you guys see in your packet, both for work sessions, finance committee, special sessions, regular session, et cetera, gets looked over, and so we did 2,330 in the last calendar year. Couple of project highlights from this last year. We worked on and got implemented, with help of the city council, a food truck ordinance. That will actually, the effective date was delayed on that, so that'll come into effect in January, so when that does take place, we'll be working with Blackhawk County Health to generate a list of businesses that would fall under, that have that type of food service license. We'll be making contact with them, just to make sure that they're aware of the ordinance change and what the process looks like. We worked to get our traffic code updated. The way the traffic code was maintained was very antiquated. Anytime a traffic ordinance change came through council, we had to hand-type in to a Word document the code change. So, we worked to get that updated, going back to 2011. They hadn't really stayed on top of that. And then, we worked with our codification company to get that hosted on the city website, so now the public has, and all of our departments have full access to, the traffic code. So, that was a huge project that we were proud to get taken care of. We've been making additional progress towards being as paperless as we can within our department. We implemented digital signatures during the pandemic, so rather than departments having to print off contracts and triplicate, send them to our office, route those through, hand-sign everything, we're now just downloading things out of Novus and putting it into the digital signature platform and getting those signed immediately. Also, all the minutes, ordinances, resolutions, we don't print those anymore, so they just live exclusively as a digital document unless we've got to record it. So, that's pretty exciting, so that those 800-some pieces of legislation that were passed, unless they're going to the county, they just completely exist as an electronic record. We are also, we've also been working to backscan a lot of documents, so our minutes, ordinances, resolutions, et cetera, all the council packet information, that has to be kept as a permanent record, which takes up a ton of space, considering your, our city was founded back in the 1860s, so there's a lot of records there. So, just over time, as we get time, we work on scanning things in, so that makes it a lot easier to search and find records, because you'd be surprised what kind of questions pop up from something that happened back in like 1982 or 1970s, so, so that's pretty exciting.
You have a good backup system. If you're putting everything online, you better have a pretty strong backup system.
Yes, there is, there's backups and redundancies that IT works very hard to put in place and to maintain.
Good. You'd hate to lose all that.
Yes, definitely. Let's see, and also worked on the COVID response team and the rental housing task force this last year, so COVID task force-wise, as you guys are very aware, we went through the grand experiment of switching our council meetings to being completely electronic during the pandemic, and then worked through the process of bringing those back out. So, there's a lot of planning that goes into place when you have to switch council meetings to being electronic. Bid openings, we switched from doing those in the first floor conference room to holding them in council chambers, and we've actually continued with that practice. I think that will be a permanent switch that we do, and thanks to Cable Access for their help with that, so each week, our bid openings are put on our City of Waterloo YouTube channel, so departments or prospective bidders could sit at their business and watch the bid opening from the cupboard of their desk chair.
Kelly, I'd just like to note that you said there's 380,000 documents or pages?
Pages, yep. Pages of records.
So, does that mean that you reviewed every one of those pages? Because that would be 1,050 pages a day, 365 days a year, so you need to be commended for that.
Thanks. We've been working, we've been working over, over the last several years on just scanning things as we go, and so as the document gets scanned in, we do check to make sure that, you know, there's not a blank page inserted in there, because if you have that blank page or something is turned incorrectly, that your record is compromised and it's, you know, it's not very usable. So, yeah, we do a lot of double-checking to make sure everything looks okay. Future projects and current projects, right now, we're going through council orientation for our new council members, and I know most of you have sat through that as well, so just for the public's input or information, all of our new council members meet with every department head in the city. They take facility tours and kind of learn all the things that go on to run a city department, and then we also participate in municipal leadership academy as part of this orientation process, and that is a training program that's put on by the Iowa League of Cities to give council members like high-level overview of a lot of the state laws that impact how they do their job. We just had our first session of that last week, and they covered open records, ethics, when to abstain, when not to abstain, things of that nature. Been working on rental code changes as part of the housing task force, so sometime in 2022, we'll be bringing, the task force will be bringing those code changes to the city council. Clerk's office, we need to do some code changes as well. Our code has not been touched since the 1940s, surprise, surprise, and the offices have changed, and the duties and roles that happened within the office have changed in that time, so look in 2022 for some of those code changes as well.
Don't you have to, and I'm forgetting the word, don't you have to have your code updated every five years?
Yeah, so there's two different ways that your city code can be codified.
Codified, yeah.
So, we're on a, excuse me, we're on a rolling codification process, so periodically as we pass ordinances, I send those ordinances to the codifier. They incorporate those into the city code, and every six months, we'll get new inserts for our code.
But you haven't gone through the whole thing, doing the whole code?
We have, so that's the codification side of it. There's just, you know, things that need to be edited, so as we get some time, taking a look at that. Let's see, in 2022, we'll also take a look at some tweaks that we need to do to the rules or procedure. There are some things that we put into that that we have not been following, such as like timing council members for the amount of time that they get to speak, three minutes, we have not been following that. And then, just trying to help make how we conduct public comment reflective of how public comment is actually being run during city council meetings, so we'll take a look at some tweaks to that as well. We're working on licensing automation with Cities Digital. They're our labor reserve fish provider, and then within the last year, we switched to that new company, so we'll be working with them this year. Our first project is going to be pet licenses, so taking that pet licensing process from being on a paper form and also being on kind of an outdated software, to being able to have somebody go to the city website, fill out the license form, and go through the payment process as well. And then, finally, we are going to switch this year to a different type of agenda management software. Novus is owned by a company called Granicus, and Granicus has a different type of software called Peak. Peak is a little bit more user-friendly for departments. There's significantly fewer clicks to go through in order to submit an agenda item. It also will automate the minutes process, so rather than having one of my staff members each time we have a meeting, have to go through and hand-type in, copy and paste the agenda items, we can just send it over to the minutes module, and that'll be ready to go for the council meetings, and then minutes can be taken within the software, so there's a little bit less formatting that has to take place. Any questions?
Great.
All right.
Good job. Can we switch over to Noel ahead of time?
We can.
Next on the agenda is operation update from community planning and development. Noel, are you ready to go?
I think so. Can you hear me okay? So, thanks for having us, talking about the Community Planning Development Department today. Our mission statement is to actively promote the development and redevelopment of the city of Waterloo, in order to provide the most conducive environment to live, work, pursue business opportunity, play, and raise a family, while remaining cognizant of the fiscal, environmental, and sociological impacts of that development. Obviously, as we move ahead with projects, change always has impacts on things, so we're always trying to look at all those. We do quite a few things, we'll go through those in the planning department, from property management, to acquisitions, to planning, to zoning, to CIP and all that, so. There is eight of us in the planning department. We are short one staff person right now, we're working to fill that position with, I think, interviews next week, so we're hoping to get back up to full staff. On a daily basis, we deal with permits at the counter for all residential, commercial, industrial site plans, floodplain calls, rezoning calls, questions from the public that could be on, on anything from dogs barking to where a fence is built. So, there's, there's a lot of daily activities. On a weekly basis, obviously, we're working on council items, applications for commissions, Cura, CLURA, alcohol licenses. On a monthly basis, I won't read all those, but there's about 15 monthly meetings that the staff has to attend, just to get things through the processes. Plus, you know, you add in like the Walnut Neighborhood Association, the Church Row, new association groups, so there's probably about 25 total that we go to. There are also another 10 outside of city commissions that we're a part of to try and plan with our partners out there in the, in the community. Planning and zoning commission, obviously, is our main commission that, that we answer to. They go through and look at all rezoning requests, ordinance revisions, site plan amendments, in-plan districts, platting and development of land, vacate, dedicated streets, all those land use type, type actions. We also do the zoning for the county by contract, so that is actually, we, we are reimbursed for our time, that is our salary plus benefits, so it's fully paid by the county, but basically, it helps them to partner not having staff over there, but it does take some of our time to do county work. And the interesting thing about the city zoning ordinance is it's, it's set up to plan out how to grow, the county ordinance is really set up how to push development back into the cities, so it's kind of a different type of setup between the two, but we administer both. We also have monthly meetings for Historic Preservation Commission, for the MPO, transportation, so a lot of other activities out there for, you know, helping developers with tax credits to preserve historic buildings, how can we nationally designate some or save them or help neighborhoods through studies that we've done, create historic neighborhoods. Transportation is the federal road dollars coming through the state of Iowa, and then it is allocated to an MPO, which is a metropolitan planning organization, so we are a part of that with Waterloo, Cedar Falls, Evansdale, Elkhorn Heights, Hudson, all the urban in Blackhawk County, and then Blackhawk County actually has a seat at the table, as well as inter cog staff who administer all the funds coming through. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of work. I think we get about 2.2 or 2.4 million a year in road dollars, and we work in partnership with the other communities to try and figure out the best projects to prioritize each year, and it's kind of a four- or five-year plan out there that we, we can alter a little bit, but we work in partnership with them to do those things. Some of the projects that would have had MPO funds as a part of them, and that's 80/20 match, it's Highway 63, partnership with the DOT, when Kimball Avenue was redone, the Ainsborough Interchange years ago, the 18th Street Bridge, we're working on the Port Road now, we'll be working on Ridgeway in the near future. We also work with the Iowa Department of Transportation and inter cog for the RISE program. It's a good thing Jamie's not here, kind of laughed, that I told Jamie, we normally have about one RISE program, project about every two years, and I think we have four active ones right now, maybe five, so we've had a lot of good activity to use them for, and obviously, the RISE program is revitalize Iowa's sound economy. That gives us additional road dollars to build roads for economic development purposes, such as the theme park, such as Controll, such as the Waterloo Air and Rail Park, so it's a good 50/50 match and brings additional money into the city of Waterloo. We look at a lot of other data for transportation, there's things called the TAS, Transportation Analysis Zones, where we will work with inter cog staff and other data sources to look at the areas divided into about 52 zones, and we look at, are they growing, are they declining in residential population, are they growing or declining in business jobs? And then, we look at the transportation numbers in those areas and kind of try to plan ahead for what roads need to be prioritized. You have some actions on the city council tonight for the census data that we just received, for the wards and precincts, so again, that's, that's data that we'll continue to look at now that it's out in public, to see how things are changing and what are the uses we have. We also work in partnership with Main Street through the contract we have with them. Two of my staff go to about four different Main Street meetings on a monthly basis to help them with their program for economic development, for marketing, for all the events that they bring down there. We do property management for the city of Waterloo, so if we need easements for sewer extension, we'll go out and get the easements, so we train the staff to do acquisition and disposition. We work with the attorney's office to do the leases, and of course, there's also the maintenance of lots, in terms of sidewalk, sidewalk cleaning and mowing and all that with property management. Working through the capital improvements programming, there's a small group of, of city staff that, that serve on that committee. We're going to add some council to that to be more involved as well this year, but we basically work with all the city part, city departments to look at what their needs are for the capital improvements program, and that's the bonding of funds for, for projects. You know, really, we have to look at everything from economic development projects out there, mandates that may have come through the federal or state government for things we have to do, such as sidewalk ramps and things of that nature, and just other actions, things that have broken sewer lines and stuff like that that we have to fix, so. And we try to prioritize those based on kind of those mandates, kind of on the, the active ones or the phase twos or the, or the emergencies, and then go through other priorities for the city of Waterloo. It's a five-year plan, but obviously, it changes on an annual basis as things happen. And there's a picture of the land use map on the, on the slide here too, and of course, how the capital improvements program plays back into the land use, overall development of the city. You know, as we're, as we're designating areas for industrial development, obviously, we're putting higher and larger water and sewer lines out there. As we're designating areas for residential growth, we're looking at how to get infrastructure to them to serve them, so it's, it's all kind of ties back together. Economic development, support economic development efforts that attract, retain, and create quality jobs resulting in a diverse economic base and increased population is on the city council agenda, so we have put together programs through city council ordinances, resolutions to try and draw, you know, existing businesses or attract new businesses, help existing businesses expand, try to get new housing starts, try to get new subdivision starts, so it's all, it's all based on trying to grow in different ways in the city of Waterloo. We've also put together some ordinances and resolutions and programs that work to foster infill development, brownfield development, as well as the reuse of vacant buildings. For infill development, we've worked in great partnership, I'd say, the last 10 years, really with the local option, with the schools coming and them building a lot of new schools. The schools made a very good prior, a promise back to the city of Waterloo to prioritize not leaving the schools standing. If you remember back in the 1980s, we had the Lafayette School, we had the Van Eaton School, that were all kind of left there for years, and working with the schools this time around, they did a great job of when a school building was not to be reused, to getting that demolished, and then we turned around and were able to get some infill housing on that. The former Irving School, the former Roosevelt School, the former Van Eaton School, the Francis Grouse School, are all of them that we have new housing starts on. I think it's about 55 houses on all those sites together with a couple more lots to go, so. They've been a great partner for some infill housing and not leaving big vacant spaces or buildings in these residential areas. For housing, we also adopted the CLURA to partner with the other incentives out there and try to draw more people to the city of Waterloo. There was the Grow Committee, which stands for Grow Residential Opportunities in Waterloo, that was, that was made up of Gary Norris from the schools, there was realtors on there, there were land developers on there, there were housing developers on there, and then there were some financial staff and, and myself. Basically, looking at what could we do to try and draw more housing in Waterloo. I think we've averaged, since the adoption of the CLURA, I don't have that number with me, but I believe we've averaged about an extra 34 houses, housing units a year total, and like an extra eight or nine how, single-family houses a year since the CLURA adoption, so it's achieving the purpose, it, we'd like it to see it higher than that, but it is achieving the purpose of getting us more housing. For infill housing, we also have the Cura. The Cura is over a designated area of the city, primarily near West Side and a large majority of the North Side of Waterloo. That was actually an area adopted based on a University of Northern Iowa student study of housing conditions in terms of deteriorating outside appearances, is how we kind of put the original Cura boundary out there. That is actually eligible for all new residential, commercial, and industrial tax increases are eligible in the Cura, so it will help housing as well as small business development and small industrial development in some areas. Really, some of these areas overlap with our TIF districts, so we'll generally work with the business to figure out what's, which one's better for the business to go ahead with, or which one's better for the city to go with if they're going to be about the same, so we try to work in partnership to, to make those things happen. We also have a recent partnership with Hawkeye Community College to, to build some new housing. I'm glad to announce with the amendment that you made for the Williston School Site, Williston Field Site, that the Hawkeye Community College Foundation will be funding new housing through the Hawkeye Program, so the city will not be funding that anymore. We built four houses with that program that we, I think we sold two of them so far, with the third about ready to sell. We've made money on the first two, we expect to make money on the last two as well, but then the next five houses at Williston Field will all be funded by Hawkeye themselves. So, it's good to have them, I guess, kind of taking that next step as a partner with us. We also have the infill policy for older neighborhoods for the reimbursement of $5,000 per unit. As you may recall, that started out as a, one of the incentives that we had for lots that we had or houses that we had through the 657A program. We've extended that, expanded that for specific areas of older subdivisions that could be eligible for infill, and then we've seen some good, some good development occur with that as well. A good example, one recently was the Lincolnshire Site over west of Ainsborough, where if you talk to the developer, they could not have afforded to make that happen without the infill program because of the street infrastructure costs and what they wanted to sell houses for in that area, specifically to hit a, hit a more middle market of, of new housing construction. For commercial and industrial development, we continue to take steps to continue that with our TIF districts. The combination of the Logan and Midport TIF districts have helped to recreate Logan Plaza. If you've seen the planning commission, we're trying to take the next steps of that with a full build-out of streets out there and a creation of more lots because we have some more projects. I think we have about six active projects that we're working on that would occur after the infrastructure. So, what that did is that allows us to take some of the funding from the airport TIF to put it into the Logan TIF, to try and create, recreate some more development there and, and make them both stronger. For downtown, the acquisition of underutilized sites has turned into a productive, growing tax base. A good example of one there specifically was the Grand Hotel Site was valued at 1.1 million when we first bought that after the 2008 flood. They actually had 23 rooms in there that they never fixed from the flood, that were growing mold and all that, so there were some specific health concerns growing when we acquired that. After the third phase, we'll have about 15 to 20 million in tax base and over 120 new residential units there, so again, we're, we're utilizing these sites and recreating higher tax base on existing areas where we have infrastructure. We've tried to do that in some of our industrial parks, the one that I noted on the, specifically that, that was a positive for us, and it's continuing to be a positive, is the, the, I'm trying to think what it was called, the empty building that was up on Airline Highway, where we helped Aggregare and Criterion grow, we actually gained six acres out of that to kind of help both of them expand. They both went from 20,000 to 40,000 and 52,000 square feet. We had six acres, we have a new 16,000 square foot building out there now, we're working with three more projects out there. So, again, we're trying to, as we work, and similar with our RISE roads, the location of those, when we're working to create new infrastructure for projects, we're also trying to plan ahead for the next set of lots to have infrastructure to them, so we have lots ready for projects when they come along. We've also worked to acquire some other land as we've worked through our TIF districts, again, to create more lots. One of our goals has been to create the shovel-ready lots in the, in the city's goals plan. We've acquired all the land at the southeast corner of Ainsborough and Highway 20 for the South Waterloo Business Park, which is a state-certified site. We're going through that recertification process again now, which is required every five years. And then, we bought some land on Wagner Road, which we have three of the lots sold there, two businesses are built, and we have three more businesses planning to build. So, again, we're seeing, we're seeing good private investment follow our public investment. In the green, in the Martin Road area, at 63 and Ridgway, we specifically worked around the former dog track site. This one was a little bit unique in that the sewer was at the north end and the water was at the south end, and so it was a matter of trying to figure out how to get this 100 acres of land redeveloped. We came up with a partnership where, and we've done this with some other private areas, such as Country Club, where we don't put any money up front as a city, the developers do, and then there's some incentive where they're paid back through the development that happens out there. It's actually a very safe way for us to see the infrastructure get extended, because then we're paying back rebates when projects occur instead of putting a lot of money out front and then for the infrastructure, so the private developers do that instead. We did switch two of our staff persons specifically towards economic development. They, they specifically work only on economic development projects with Greater Cedar Valley Alliance, Main Street, and businesses coming in, and you'll see the, the numbers that have gone up because of those efforts. I think we've gone up, after I think we've gone up, after the first person was dedicated, I think we went up about 16 million. The next one, it was about 40 million. So, again, we're, we're seeing that, the efforts of being more proactive. We also have some grant funds through the Department of, through the EPA and the DNR for assessment. So, with our assessment grants, we're specifically looking to go out and do Phase One and Phase Two testing on sites so that people don't think they're contaminated. There's obviously a perception out there that it was a former gas station, that maybe there's some underground tanks. So, we'll go out there and do the work so that basically then we can mark them as a nice clean site and try to get businesses to develop there, whereas otherwise, the businesses will look on the outer skirts of town or in other communities. We have a current $400,000 grant right now that we're going through in, in identifying sites. And like I said, we, we've, we've actually done a very good job of not just identifying sites, but then we generally get projects that follow them. Some of the efforts for the EPA grants that we've moved, moved ahead with afterwards is the new Public Works Building, who's on the former Construction Machinery Site, the Tech Works Campus from the John Deere Campus, demolition and cleanup of the former Chamberlain Manufacturing Site, the former Grand Hotel Site that we talked about. And there is a Phase Three portion that we're trying to acquire some land from the DOT on there that we actually cleaned up from a former milk production facility. Single-speed redevelopment of the former Wonder Bread Site, actually had some underground tanks there, and some smaller sites throughout the community. This past year, at Glance, we had our fourth highest total in permit valuation at 141 million. Residential construction at 65 new units, so that was down a little bit. We tend, we're, we always kind of aim for 100. We tend to kind of go up and down in residential because we don't have enough lots being platted. So, we're, we're continuing to try and find more land developers out there. Redevelopment of Logan Plaza continues with over 9.1 million in new tax value. Major road connections with University Avenue, Highway 63, and La Porte Road under design. The RISE Grant we talked about at Newell, Warp, Hyper, 11th Street Bridge, and Shawless Road. The Northeast Industrial Corridor Study with other entities underway. Again, that goes back to the transportation dollars that we're looking for, that, that pathway kind of to the north and east of Waterloo with, with the county and other smaller. Allin Grocers has taken out their permits for their building. The Art Block opened, new infill subdivisions, Lincolnshire I talked about, the Edison Site, we're, we're working with Leisure Services to bring another plan back to council, the YMCA land, Martin Road Area, officials in Warren Transport is coming in, the Theme Park Construction, Tech Works Campus redevelopment with LSB, and Tyson Foods adding over 245 new jobs out at theirs. Looking ahead, our goals are to continue development with permit values at or above the 100 million mark. At this point, we are ahead of two years ago, which we hit 161 million, but we're ahead of, but we're behind. Last year, we hit 142 million. So, it just depends on the month when the permits come in sometimes. Continue to develop or redevelop sites for new residential, commercial, and industrial opportunities. Continue to make needed transportation planning and improvements in areas such as La Porte Road, Northeast Bypass, and Ridgeway. Continue to review zoning and other ordinances with nationwide trends and standards for development-friendly regulations. Some of the things we're seeing there is a lot of communities are dropping their parking requirement numbers, so we'll look at that for businesses specifically like fast food and restaurants because a lot more people are getting takeout because of pandemic concerns. So, we'll look at what others are doing and see if it makes sense for here. Continue to work towards quality-of-life improvements for residents to attract new businesses and employees to areas such as recreational trails, water features, other amenities. Continue to work towards the sale and redevelopment of city-owned property to find the highest and best use. Continue to finish the goals of the Riverfront Renaissance Project, which is bringing private investment along the riverfront with more housing, the Marina, and to continue the Walnut Neighborhood System for neighborhood revitalization. And as I noted, we just joined a new Church Row Association there. We're, we're really working with a lot of good partners in there to try and duplicate a lot of the things we've seen in Walnut. And that is all I have on the presentation. Is there any questions?
Madam Chair. So, Noel, I just want to say thank you for all the work that you and your staff do. And I know that I'm looking forward to personally, one of the goals that you'll have in this next year, which is rolling out the Child Care Incentive Program that we have talked about. But this stuff is really important. It's maybe not the most flashy, but it's what gets us where we need to go. So, thank you and your staff for all your work.
Anyone else have any questions or comments?
Good job, Noel. I'm impressed with the amount of, of projects you move through your department. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next on the agenda, I'm sorry, yeah. Pardon?
I'm gonna take a break right away.
Okay. We're having a quick break.
We got a few minutes anyway.
Yeah, we're ahead of schedule.
It's like the first time. It's like the first time.
Okay, let's go to operations update from Animal Control and Traffic Departments. Randy and Sandy, who's gonna go first? Sandy?
Okay, we're gonna do traffic operations first.
You've got such a soft voice. Make sure and speak into that.
I will.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, our traffic operations mission statement is to provide the highest level of service to the residents of Waterloo by providing reductions of accidents, congestion, and travel times through efficient and effective design, installation, maintenance, and operation of traffic control devices, street lighting, and public education. This is our organizational structure. Public Works Division Manager, Director, and Traffic Operations, we have a traffic engineer, an administrative secretary, a signal technician foreman, a signal tech two, a signal tech one, electrician foreman, three electricians, a sign and paint foreman, and two equipment operators. Although, right now, we are advertising for another traffic engineer. Our traffic operations budget is all road use tax funding. Our total expense budget is $1,594,024. We have a separate budget for our streetlights, and this includes all streetlights in Waterloo, whether they're owned by the city or Mid-American Energy. And the budget for that's $523,180. We also have a budget for our traffic signals, and that's $48,000. Our overall duties, we have 189 signalized intersections that we maintain. We have 40 miles of our traffic fiber that we maintain. 27 signalized crosswalks, 27 prepared-to-stop flashers, 160 EVP, which is emergency vehicle preemption intersections, which means when a fire truck or an ambulance goes through, they hit their emitter and it gives them a green light. We have 2,503 city-owned streetlights, which includes some parking lot lights and some trail lights. We have 19 early warning sirens. We have 10 tower lights, which are the big ones over, usually the highway, but ours are on Green Hill Road and some on Washington Street. We are expanding our fiber optics network. We have conflict monitor testings for 180 intersections, which means each year, a technician goes out and tests every signal, every single intersection to make sure that if something would fault, that the intersection automatically goes into flash. So, there's no way there can be two green lights, two red lights. It automatically goes into flash. We have over 1,500 locates that we do annually. We replace, repair damaged light poles, signals, underground conduits through accidents or if they're hit by contractors or underground wire. We review all plans for engineering overlays and, and street reconstruction. We have an electrician or a technician on call 24/7. We also do video monitoring and recording of traffic and streets. We set generators out for power outages so our high-speed intersections keep operating. We have intersection investigations for accidents, et cetera. We do signal design. We do intelligent, intelligent transportation systems. We do parking investigations and designs, which means we have designed downtown parking before, like on Sycamore, and when they went from one-way to two-way. We also do pavement markings. We replace and upgrade all signs. We fabricate signs now in-house for city departments and also outside agencies, which include like the schools, sometimes smaller cities like Denver and Hudson. We have a 28E agreement with Evansdale and Elkhorn Heights for signals. There's four signalized intersections and about eight streetlights that we take care of. We also do pedestrian ADA requirements and bicycle accommodations. We do traffic calming, which are basically speed humps that we put in. This year, we put in three. We added three. We help police department with assistance in investigations for accidents or shootings. If there isn't cameras and they have to do an overview, we take them up in our bucket trucks and they can take photos. We do flood control and snow removal, and we study and improve and upgrade safety and efficiency. In traffic, we're in two divisions. We have a sign and paint division. They have a director, a foreman, and two equipment operators. They're responsible for all signs, marking, and painting of streets. We fabricate signs for city streets, special events, routes, city departments, outside agencies. We did a lot for Regbri this year. We do decals and marking of city departments, and we did all the police vehicles with our new markings. Did all that in-house, saved quite a bit of money. They also plow, excuse me, plow and salt for snow removal, and they also do flood control. We do approximately 156 miles of painting every year. With our new truck, which is in the left-hand corner, we'll be able to keep track of exactly how many miles in how many, how many miles of line striping, double or skip lines that we do, where we could never do that before, but this is a super, super truck. So, you can see that we paint 1,120 gallons of white paint, 2,275 yellow, 44,000 of beads. That's what makes our paint reflect. We do 530 crosswalks, 93 railroad crossings, which now we are doing more into thermoplastic than we are painting because they last longer. 41 yellow curves, curves, 36 false islands, 39 speed humps, 16 parking lots that we do, and four ramps. We try to apply 30 thermoplastic markings each year, but depending on weather and time, we can't always get that done. Here's some of the signs we fabricate. Yes?
Is it okay to ask questions?
Sure.
Okay, two things. First is, with Waterloo being geographically, I think, the second-largest square miles in the, in the state, but with the population that we have and the tax base that we have, how do these numbers, I mean, 156 miles of striping compared to other cities that have a higher population but less miles that they have to cover?
I would actually have to, we, we had that information years ago, but I don't have any updated information right now, but I can find out. That's, that's an easy find.
Okay. And then the second thing, i- is Mohammed or somebody going to be putting out to the public some instructional guides on the bicycle lights that are on Park Avenue?
Yes. Actually, we'll probably have a work session on that, and then we'll go to the news media. Yes, definitely.
Yeah, thanks.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Two, two quick questions. Sandy? For the, for the general public, because I, how does, how does a neighborhood or a street request a speed hump?
A speed hump?
Yes.
What, they can either go online, because we have a form online that they can fill out. It's a petition, or they can call our office and we can send them one. And what they need, according to our policy, is two-thirds of the people on that block that they're requesting to agree to have us do a speed study. And once we get that application in, then we'll set up our counters and stuff and do a speed study. And whoever is the lead person on that request, then we send the information back to them, whether it's warranted or not.
Okay. And then, and secondly, do you have specific areas in town that, that you go back and, and repaint before winter?
We do some areas. It, it just depends on traffic.
Because I can, I, an example would be northbound Kimball at San Martin. That's an extremely confusing intersection as soon as it gets wet and dark.
We do that one usually. We also do 18th Street down by Commercial and all that. We usually do that in the spring and in the fall, too. So, there's certain areas that, yes, we do. But we've also, I'll get to this soon, too, but we purchased some high-billed paint and put that in the downtown area last spring. So, we're gonna see through the winter and everything how that holds up. And if it, if it holds up better and we maybe not have to paint every year or every other year, then we'll start purchasing that and rotating, just to, well, save time and money also.
Yeah, that'd be good, because like on, on Kimball and San Martin, when you, when you're going northbound and you, and you're gonna turn left on San Martin, you jog. and you're gonna turn left on San Martin, you jog way over. Oncoming traffic's coming right at you.
Yes.
And if the lines aren't there, they don't know where to go.
Right. And the more we work on that, we try to use possibly thermoplastic to grind it in. That's our goal, but we've been painting right now.
All right, well, thank you.
This is just our sign inventory and some of our equipment, is a couple of the signs that we have fabricated. Our flood control and snow removal equipment. We put up the flood walls. Some accomplishments in the sign shop were the high-billed paint we used. We put in the thermoplastic markings for RagBri for the bike trails this year. We got a new pulse puller, which really helps out a lot. And then we put the decals on the police cars. Our goals for the upcoming years are to become more efficient and versatile, and we're gonna be able to do that with our new equipment, with our new paint truck. We're gonna continue training on sign making and vehicle wrap classes. I have a equipment operator that we send every year to a school to learn more in-depth on sign fabrication and also the wrapping of vehicles. And we keep progressing on sign inventory, which is a lot, and upgrading. There are a number of signs that we have to upgrade every so often. The other one is the traffic division of traffic operations, where we take care of the signals, the streetlights, cameras, fibers, smart poles, early warning sirens, plus. We have the director, the traffic engineer, the signal technician foreman, signal technician two, signal technician one, electrical foreman, three electricians, and administrative secretary, and hopefully soon, another traffic engineer. We have completed a number of projects this year and highlights. I can go through them all or just pick out certain ones, but a lot of our, we're installing fiber throughout the city. We did the loop on US 218 to San Martin to back on Kimball and 4th Street. Green Hill and Progress is studied and designed. We just don't have the funding right now to put in permanent signals. Downtown re-timing study was completed. We are continuing to upgrade our high-pressure sodiums with LEDs for streetlights, upgrading our video detections. Highway 63 Adaptive Signal Control Technology Project is ongoing. We've done fiber optics. Camera master plan is ongoing. We help the police department when they want to put in red light cameras. We plan with them for locations. Downing and Ainsborough, that signal project was completed. We're expanding our fiber optic connections throughout the city. We have replaced streetlight poles and bases every year. We do numerous speed hump studies. I mean, numerous, but only a few qualify. We do a lot of GIS data entering still. We had $500,000 in safety and federal grants for traffic signals, video detection upgrades. We've installed monitoring cameras on the Highway 218 corridor, which is 11th, 18th, Hawthorne, Mitchell Avenue, and San Martin. We, we are working on a Park Avenue bicycle signal project, which is something new, and we will have signals installed just for bicyclists. So this is what Mr. Morrissey was talking about, that we'll get all this information out as soon as, they're working on it now, so as soon as it's completed. And that was done with a grant.
Madam Chair. Real quick. On that bicycle study, Sandy, I just want to make sure that we are including in that, in that, the bicycle signal work, the preemption. Because...
If, yes, if it is, I'm trying to think. It is on Park Avenue, so yes.
It's on Park Avenue and it's also on Mulberry.
Yes.
So I would hate to have a bicyclist get to go and have a fire truck thinking he's got green lights.
No, it'll all be connected.
Okay.
It's all connected.
All right, thank you.
We had one early warning siren installed on Hess Road. We tried to do one a year if possible. Fabricated over 1,000 signs. Installed lighted street name signs on University Avenue. I don't know if you've noticed, but it's the only area in town where we have lighted street name signs on the mast arms. We're kind of the only city around here right now that's done that. We installed two smart poles on Franklin Street, right at Lincoln Park. These are poles that we got a discounted price for out of California. They will, in turn, they're not all hooked up yet, but they are smart poles that will have Wi-Fi. They'll have weather. They'll have internet connection. Trying to think what else. They'll have crash detection or loud noise, where if there's a crash or, God forbid, a gunshot or anything, it'll automatically start filming it. So, and notify the police department right away. So these poles are going up all over, and they're the state of the art. So these are our first two. We're hoping to get more as time goes on. We also completed Greyhound and Ridgeway signals, and with the lane addition out there, that is now completed. Here's just a couple pictures of our completed projects. There's a sign on University Avenue. RagBri. This we were given to by the Center for the Arts, and an artist did these bicycle sculptures. I don't know if you saw them, but we were asked to install them from scratch. So we ordered poles, temporarily put them on Commercial Street, and this is the day before and the morning of RagBri coming in that we completed all this. I have to give my guys a big kudos. They, unbelievable what they did with something that they had no idea what they were working with. So it was, it was quite the thing to watch them actually install these and weld. Lot of compliments. It was really a cool thing. Our early warning siren maintenance, we sent two electricians to siren maintenance school for the first time, which was, was a great accomplishment. We have 19 sirens. We visit them twice a year for maintenance unless we get service calls on them. We've replaced three of them over the last three years. We try to, like I said, we try to replace one each year. We do locates to protect critical city-owned underground fiber optic and traffic signal wires from damage. And this is just some pictures as to what has happened, even though they were located. Things happen and we still get dug into. Our energy-efficient LED streetlight upgrade, this is awesome. We still have a little over 200 LEDs to, high-pressure sodiums to replace with LEDs. Just saying how much longer the life is. This will also reduce our time to go out and replace streetlights. And the average wattage we're going to be saving, unbelievable. After it's all figured out, we'll be saving a lot. Money-wise, this hasn't really shown yet, as Mid-American Energy and the city are still working on their LEDs, and over a period of two to three years, we'll start seeing a big savings in our bills every month. So probably about almost $45,000 a month, once these are all in. And these are, like it says, using Mid-American rates from 2021. We have streetlight pole base replacement program. These, this is what happens after a number of years with all the salving and stuff. They just rust away. Some of them fall over, or they blow over in the wind, or they're knocked over. So we try to replace at least 12 a year, if time permits and we have the money to do it. There's our two smart pole installations, which is an awesome thing. Kind of pictures of incidental repairs, accidents, weather. We have a number of accidents every year. We bill out for those. So whoever has insurance, you know, we get reimbursed for our labor and our time and materials. We have traffic installation maintenance, and maintenance, these are like a number of corridors or intersections that we do installation and maintenance on every year. Our traffic safety measures, you know, we do the hospital emergency gate. We do rapid flashers, countdown pedestrian signals are what are big now. They are also voice, so if a blind person comes up, it will talk to them so they know when they can cross the street and when they can't.
Sandy, I hate to interrupt, but you've gone past the time where we were gonna pass it to Randy for animal control. I don't know what you want to do. How long will the animal control take, Randy?
10 minutes.
27 slides.
Yeah, not long. Yeah, we can go to the next.
If you can, between the two of you, get it so that we adjourn at 5:10.
Yep, we'll do this quick.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry. We just have a lot going on.
Just a lot to talk about.
We do. Okay, this is animal control. I will go through this really quick.
What? Was I being rude?
No, you're never rude.
Oh, okay.
Okay, "to provide quality service to the citizens through education, enforcement, and leadership, promote responsible pet ownership, including vaccination, spay and neutering." Kind of our same structures for traffic, only we have, right now, we're down one full-time officer and two part-time officers. We're trying to hire, but we'll see what we can do. We are on call 24 hours a day. Our budget comes out of sanitation fund, $377,969. We enforce everything in the ordinance for animal control. We're very busy. We also do Cedar Falls and U.N.I. We have a trap-neuter-release program that we work with Cedar Bend on this, where it's you trap cats, you neuter them, spay them, and return them. Last year, we seized, due to neglect or abandonment, 12 dogs in Waterloo, 47 cats, four dogs in Cedar Falls, and 11 cats. Because of the new law that was passed by the legislature, we have had three individuals arrested within the last year for animal cruelty. I don't, I don't have pictures. If you want to see them, I can show them, but it's better that you don't see some of them. But thank goodness that the law is behind us now. So we call in the police department. We do the investigation. They arrest them.
Good.
Here's how our officers are dressed to go into some homes that we have to go into, because they're so bad, our nice, ordinary encounters that we do. So we do have, we do really good things. We responded to 4,052 calls in a year. We had 185 bike cases. You know, we pick up DOAs. We issued 161 citations in Waterloo. We do not issue them in Cedar Falls. We call the police department in and they issue them. We, we, just as animal control, took in 437 dogs, 1,353 cats, 23 pocket pets, which are rabbits or hamsters or whatever. Same thing from Cedar Falls. We take those in. We have a great partnership with Cedar Bend Humane Society. They also sell licenses for us. We also sell them out of our van. Those are our totals from last year. Microchip licensed animals, we return to owners. We just charge a pickup fee. Our van and our goals. We just keep going to do the best we can do and hopefully get some more training and get some new officers on board. So I went through that really quick.
That's great.
Madam Chair.
Questions? Yes, Mr. Morrissey.
Sandy, I know you didn't get to the goals and that for, for traffic, but I looked at it real quickly and I see one missing.
What's that?
And that's to lower the speed on University Avenue from Green Hill Road to Fletcher to 35 miles an hour.
I think that's your goal, not necessarily Sandy's.
Yeah, but I'm not here anymore after tonight.
So you're passing the torch to Sandy.
There needs to be another bullet there, Sandy, so thank you.
No, I think we can do the study and see what happens, but it has to warrant copying this.
Well, I have a study of my own and it should pass.
Well, you know what? We'll talk about that. We'll talk about that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Anything else you want to say that we kind of brushed you through?
No, not at this time. If you have any questions, you can always call us.
We know where you are.
Yes, you do.
You do good work.
Thanks.
Thank you very, very much.
We enjoy our work. We do.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn. Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.